Okay, called this Village of Green Hills Council Meeting for March 26, 2024. It's an order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Hermes? Ms. Hermes?
I'm here.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Here we have a prayer by Maria Walton.
Dear Lord, we are just a few days away to celebrate the death and resurrection of you, our Lord. Please bless all here present and bring comfort to those in trouble and distress in our communities. May our devotion enjoy sweet fulfillment for the promise of one day rejoicing with you. Please remember those who are gone before us, those whoever has left behind. Please especially remember our police chief and officers, our fire chief and our volunteer fire department, to get home every night and back to us in the morning safe and sound. Please in this time, bring consolation for those in sorrow, including those serving our country, so we can, with your help, continue to be one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Do not forget those who have served and are MIAs, and those who are missing a part of their body, or who are in emotional distress with PTSD, suffering diseases contracted by exposure that we don't know what it is. We also want to protect their families, start taking care of them, to keep a watchful eye for those who serve their country valiantly, and yet, in the country of plenty, they're homeless. As we celebrate our freedoms, let's pray for the veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice while defending our country. Bless their families, comfort them with the thankful prayers of a grateful nation. We thank you for our veterans, past, present, and future, and let us remember that it is through the efforts of these individuals that will help us to continue to promote justice in all nations. Dear Lord, I got a tall order to fill today, and I ask your blessings that everything we do here today, tonight, and tomorrow will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
And for the pledge of allegiance, we have the legionnaires that will lead us in the flag.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Order, pardon. Live face. Order up. Right face. Up. Live face. Mr. Mayor, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to present these checks to you in totaling an amount of $3,000 from the American Legion and the Sons of the American Legion. This is for the fire department? Yes. Okay, thank you. See that they get it. Thank you. Let's face. Order march. Live. I want to thank the American Legion for their generosity, for the fire department for these checks.
They asked me what would they need, so I went ahead and asked Chief Spence to list my list, and it resulted bad.
Okay, the next thing, we have approval of minutes at the previous meetings, the work session of February 13, 2024, the council meeting of February 27, 2024. If there are any corrections or comments, if there are none, the minute stands as approved. All right, had the legion public presentation has already happened, forgot that. Jennifer Wyker, staff for the library.
Thanks for letting me come again and give you an update of all the fun things we're doing over at the library. You all may know that we're going to be having an eclipse on April 8. It's been promoted just a little bit, but I did want to reiterate one more time that the libraries, all locations will be having different events. And at Green Hills, ours is going to be from 1:30 to 4:30, and we will have eclipse glasses for use at that library program. We're not distributing them ahead of time, but come and see us over there, and we'll have some fun activities and glasses to share and be a part of this wonderful community event that's going to be happening. Other libraries are having programs coming up to it as well. We even have a homeschooling series program coming up on April 6, which is Stories in the Stars, which is the stories of the constellations from UC Classics will be coming. There's other ones that will be explaining the science of eclipses from the observatory. There's a lot of it on our website, so if you go to chpl.org under events and click on eclipse, lots of fun things that will be happening. We do also, like I said, we have the glasses. We also have safe viewing tips from NASA and some other organizations that have approved all of them, but we do hope that you will stop by. The eclipse begins at 1:52. It will be the peak at 3:09, and it will end at 4:24. It will be over 99% here. We are not quite in totality. If you do want to see totality and want to visit a library at the same time, Harrison Branch will be in totality. So we'll be just a little bit north of here, too. It's also tax season, so we can print out tax forms. We have copies of the instruction booklets for both the federal and the state that are reference copies. You're welcome to come and make any Xeroxes that you need for any of those pages. We can also print out any forms that you need, including Rita, Ohio, and federal. Just let us know what you need, and we'll be happy to print them out for you. We also have computers, so if you need access to amend something, file something, we can help with that. Besides the ancient Stories in the Stars for the homeschoolers, we're going to have Cincinnati and the Aegean Greek artifacts, also presented by UC Classics, on Saturday, April 13 at 2:00 p.m. for adults. And that's kind of the history of the classics department and all of the different digs and artifacts that Cincinnati has a very long history of being involved with those over in Greece, so they'll have a lot of really interesting things to share about that. We also are offering tech hours and resume building programs, one on Saturday, April 6 at 2:00 p.m., or Tuesday, April 16 at 5:00 p.m. And you can register by calling us or going online. And we can help you out with computer help that you need, if you would like tips on how to build a resume, all of that. We'll be more than happy to sit down with you. Teens will have a mini canvas art program on Wednesday, April 17 at 4:00 p.m. And of course, we do have our story times every Monday, 10:30 a.m. for families and 11:30 for adult story time. And we're going to be having a large financial money talk on May 6 at 6:30 p.m. That's a Monday. And that's a HUD certified financial counselor that will cover money trauma and why we spend money the way we do. We will learn how to recognize money spending habits and change them for the better. This workshop will also go over the different types of credit cards and loans, APR, what goes into a credit score, and the effects of a poor credit score. We will discuss predatory lending and how to recognize it, as well as common scams and how to avoid them. And there will be a Q&amp;A session afterwards, and it's offered in partnership with the Brighton Center. So we've got a lot of fun stuff coming up. Hope you'll come down and see us.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody? All right. Thanks for keeping us updated. Okay, next, we have on the agenda a public hearing regarding community development block grant programs for '24 through '26.
Ready? Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is the first of two public hearings that we'll be holding for the community development block grant program for the next three-year period. And it's basically so I can give you a little bit of information about the program, and we ask our citizens, council members, to be thinking of possible projects that you would like to have funded. So basically, the program is administered by the Hamilton County Community Development Department. They have a total of $4.5 million this year to give out. Sadly, that amount goes down every year. We used to be able to get like $125-plus in past years, and now we're down to about $45,000 that we receive. So, hard telling. I intend to shoot for $50,000 and be hopeful of receiving that. But to give you a little bit of an idea, for eligible projects, our basic activities, and this is for just in the eligible communities, there are a few who don't participate, but basic activities like if we get into acquisition, disposition of property, public facilities like a senior center, parks and playgrounds are huge. I intend to put in the parks because we really need it and want to finish ours. Neighborhood-type facilities, there are some that you have to be in certain target areas, like waste disposal facilities and stuff, that we wouldn't really be needing that. Street improvements, rehab and preservation, code enforcement, historic preservation, under-preservation, and again, the basic economic development activities like acquisition of property, construction of public facilities, and commercial and industrial facilities. Some of the things that are ineligible for funding under this program would be purchase of equipment, operating and maintenance expenses, just general government types of expenses are not eligible, political activities, and new housing construction. So the main purpose is also to be providing funding for low-to-moderate income individuals. We do have a small portion of a census block on the east side of town that fits the criteria. Thus, we are eligible for this program. So we do want to keep that in mind, that it would be something that would serve really the whole community, so we can capture that block as well. Very basic, but if people could be thinking about things.
On the street improvement, what does that cover?
Literally, I think you could pave a road with it. I know in the past, the village has used it for sidewalks. Sidewalk on the west side of Wenton.
Because there might be some of the streets that we need.
Well, and there are the dollar amounts.
It depends on that, yeah.
Yes, years past, we, again, I think as much as a couple hundred thousand dollars to do the street project, but those days have all passed.
I do want to comment that the second hearing, if you have ideas for projects, bring them to our Tuesday, April 23 council meeting. There will be the second public hearing to gather information and to share with the public what ideas we've come up with as well. Thank you.
All right, moving on, reports of municipal officials. Municipal manager, Yvonne Gobek.
Okay, thank you. At your place, you'll see the new list of 2024 Sunshine Mall dates that are available to you. If you're interested in taking, I think we do have, our new council member will need to take it during his term. You're required to take it at least once during your term. And then I will take it annually to cover everyone as well. But they're not bad, really. They're pretty interesting. They have some pretty good people presenting them, so they're not as dry as they used to be. So that list is there for your convenience. We had also received some information from the state of Ohio to become an official America 250 community, and it involves a resolution, which I have done for the April meeting. But the mayor and I talked briefly about maybe putting this into a committee to work on it, because the expectation is that the next steps will, after we pass the resolution, if it's something we want to do, there'll have to be a committee that works on our major projects that we might want here in town to recognize the 250th birthday of our country. So you will put that in committee?
Right.
Okay.
Maybe recreation, community development.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let's see here. Okay, I want to make you aware of, I know from time to time, you hear and read things about Dollar General here in Green Hills, actually in some locations throughout Ohio. And I do want to make you aware that our fire marshal had presented a case when the violate, it's a long period of time that you have to address violations that he puts out there, but as periods pass, his next step recourse is up to the Board of Building Appeals of the state of Ohio, working with the state fire marshal. And he did on March 18. One, five violations were up there, and he won that case. It was unanimous support for it. And, you know, you got to think safety first, and there were some pretty serious things there. They were, had a one-time fine of $25,000, but if they don't meet the deadline to make the improvements in their facility, then it'll become a daily $2,500 daily fine. So hopefully, they will comply and make it a safer environment for our citizens to shop in. Sorry, it was huge.
Does that fall on the owner of the shopping center, or does that fall on Dollar General?
In this case, it fell on Dollar General.
Okay.
Yes, and it just, so people know, even the $25,000, that fine money does not come here. That goes to the state Board of Building Appeals, but it's important.
And that's also applicable towards the owner of the shopping center if he has direct violations as well?
I'm sorry?
If the owner of the shopping center has violations of his property himself, of what he has in there.
If he does.
If he does, then also a price to the owner.
That would apply to him, too. This one did not.
Okay.
And I don't, we have all those details, but if it did apply, yes.
Okay, okay.
Certainly.
Could it be a possibility that they would leave because of the fine?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But on the other hand, I know they've had some operational issues down there, like no employees, things like that. And ours is not the only one, believe me. Not the only one at all. So I don't know what Dollar General's doing to try to address this thing, maybe nationally, but certainly in the state of Ohio. So that was a big one, and you could potentially hear more about it. I'm trying to think if I've covered everything. I think I have?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Ready. Law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, the only thing I had to report tonight is related to the one piece of legislation that you have on your agenda tonight, the moratorium for adult use cannabis. I'm happy to, I can discuss it now or wait until the appropriate time of the legislation. Just do it now?
True.
Okay. I mean, we've discussed this a little bit in the past, but State Issue II passed back at the November ballot, and once it went into effect, that legalized what is being referred to as adult-use cannabis operations. It's what we have been calling recreational marijuana. So this is the recreational side, as opposed to the medical marijuana stuff that was passed, or that was adopted maybe six, seven years ago or so. So, at one point, I think I had told you that there were a number of bills that had been introduced at the state that were proposing to make changes to the new state law. I can tell you at this point, none of them have passed. In fact, none of them have really gotten out of committee. And I just was at a presentation a week or so ago, and someone who is pretty knowledgeable about that industry indicated that the House and the Senate really aren't even talking to each other on this particular topic. So the advice that we have going forward is it's already the law in Ohio, and we should not wait. You don't need to wait for any changes at the state level. It's probably appropriate to start whatever process you may want to start to decide how you want to deal with it now. That's why we proposed the moratorium. As we've, for those of you that were around back on the medical marijuana stuff, you might remember, we passed a moratorium then. It's what we're proposing now. And essentially, what that does is temporarily would prohibit all of those types of uses until council or committee and full council have a chance to talk about it, think about it, decide how you may want to proceed with regulations or no regulations. So I can tell you, with respect to the legislation, it's a moratorium. Like I said, it's a temporary stop. It's listed for 360 days, and I may have, I can't remember if we talked about this. I've talked about this with a lot of local governments. I can't remember if we have or not. But when medical marijuana started, we did a lot of, everyone did a moratorium for 180 days. But then the state had not finished what they were supposed to do in 180 days, so many places extended it for another 180 days. We just thought we would make it 360 to start. That way, we won't have to worry about any extensions if necessary. But I also want to be clear that just because you adopt a moratorium for 360 days, it's council's prerogative at any time during that 360 days to, you can get rid of the moratorium, you can initiate or, you know, do whatever kind of regulations you decide that you may want to do. This was just sort of a catch-all. Hopefully, it'll give you plenty of time to decide what you want to do. With respect to that, I think it's probably a good idea just to remind you what your authority is under this new law. It's pretty clear. The new law does say that the legislative authority of a municipal corporation can adopt an ordinance to, basically, two things. You can prohibit adult-use cannabis operators, and that's an umbrella term that includes the cultivators, the processors, and the retail dispensaries. So you can prohibit it, or you can limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators. I've seen, you know, some communities have said, okay, we're not going to prohibit it, but we're only going to permit two. So that's what that section means. You can, or you can do nothing. And if you do nothing, I think generally what we're talking about are the retail dispensaries. That's the most likely thing. I don't know that there's any space in Green Hills for a giant warehouse, you know, cultivation or processing business. But if it comes, if you do nothing, they're going to be treated like any other retail business, and they would be permitted anywhere that your zoning code permits retail. Which reminds me, I also double-checked. I went back to see what you did with respect to medical marijuana, those types of businesses. And for those of you that remember, you did not, ultimately, you did not prohibit them. They are listed as conditional uses in, I think, certain, in B1, and I can't remember if it's in, they're in your business districts. But they are a conditional use. So I would, I remind you of that, so that as you make a decision about what you may or may not want to do with respect to adult-use cannabis dispensaries, you may want to bring those two things in line, instead of having different regulations for different types of dispensaries. So that's what your authority is. That's what you can do. There are a couple of things that you cannot do, and it's probably worth mentioning that now. You cannot levy any kind of a tax or a fee or a charge against these operators or their property unless it's the kind of, you know, tax, fee, or charge that you levy against every type of business. So you can't have a specific tax or fee or levy just for that type. You cannot prohibit or limit anything to do with the home grow portion that's authorized under state law. And essentially, you cannot prohibit or restrict anything that's authorized under the state law. So that's what you can do. That's what you can't do. If you adopt the moratorium that's being proposed tonight, and it is being proposed as an emergency, and I can, the reason for that is just to get the moratorium in place at the earliest possible time, just so, depending on how council decides to act, on a long term, it doesn't create a gap in time where a business may be able to come in that's contrary to what your ultimate goal may or may not be. So that's what's before you tonight, and when you get there, if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Right now, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about adult-use cannabis operations.
If I could, just to clarify, because I know that there's been misinformation out in the public about this, the passage of the moratorium is not an exclusion of the possibility of an adult cannabis operation in the future?
Correct. I mean, the way I describe it is, if you were to adopt the moratorium as it's presented, temporarily, those kinds of businesses would not be able to locate here. But if then council decides that you want to allow them, or limit the number, or put them in specific zoning districts, whatever it is that you do, once you take that action, the moratorium goes away, and then they would be able to locate here under whatever type of regulations you adopt.
The other question is, I know in past efforts by the state, they've limited it to certain distances from schools, churches, and that sort of thing.
And that is the same here. It is, it's prohibited within 500 feet of, and I think it's, schools, parks, playgrounds, churches. There's a list of prohibited locations, so...
And that's the state regulation?
That's the state regulation. You wouldn't have the authority to impose something like that anyway, under the way the law is written. That's a state thing already. I also understand that as they start to issue, as the state starts to issue the licenses for these new dispensaries, there is also a rule that no dispensary can be within, I think it's within a mile of another dispensary. So, and that's, again, that's all governed by the state. That has nothing to do with local regulations.
So we could only have one tops anyway because of the size of our village?
I will tell you, one of the other, the last community that, where we discussed this, one of the suggestions was if you were to take a map of the community and put a dot on every church, school, playground, you know, all the prohibited things, and you drew the 500-foot circle around all those, you would start to see that, again, depending on the size of your community, the, how many opportunities there even really are for that type of business. And then, if you had one with this mile exclusion around it, it really does sort of self-regulate how many may be. I can tell you, it is, again, doesn't apply here because you don't have any medical dispensaries, but any existing medical dispensary, there's a provision in the law where they will have an expedited path to also become an adult-use or recreational dispensary. And if they happen to be within a mile of each other, they're kind of grandfathered in under that. So, but that doesn't apply here.
I know there's a cultivation or processing up at Forest Park, but is there a medical?
I don't.
I think Forest Park has a medical dispensary, but I can't remember where it was. I was going to go in.
Yeah, yes.
I understand we're putting a pause, in other words, to see what happens. What can you tell me about other facilities? What are they doing? Are they doing the same thing to see what happens and to have a pause to figure out what to do?
I can tell you a number of communities have adopted a moratorium in a similar fashion, and then are making it, you know, I don't know of any that have made any final determination yet, but that's, I mean, that's kind of what's happening. A lot of places are taking that temporary pause with the moratorium and then deciding. That buys you the time to then really study and decide what it is that you want to do. that buys you the time to then really study and decide what it is that you want to do.
Second question. Is there going to be a quantity amount allowed to be sold for per month?
It's not per month. My understanding is, I believe that it's per day.
Per day? So they cannot be open from 8:00 in the morning till midnight?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't, I misunderstood.
Okay.
There's nothing in the state law that regulates hours of operation. What I was talking about is, it does say that, for example, you're allowed, under the law, even right now, you're allowed to possess, I think it's 2.5 ounces. And the regulations for dispensaries say that they cannot sell more than 2.5 ounces to any individual in any day. So they can't sell you more than you're actually allowed to legally possess, at least on that day.
On that day?
Yeah.
Okay. You answered the question.
That's quite good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Teresa Lawler.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief of Police, Neil Har, Chief of Police. We all appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. During the month of February, the officers responded to 134 incidents. 10 of those were criminal offense reports. Of the 10 criminal offenses, we had three domestic violence, one simple assault, two theft reports, one phone harassment, one narcotic violation, and two OVIs driving under the influence of alcohol. Officers made 15 arrests, eight of those 15 were for warrants. We assisted other jurisdictions in eight different mutual aid calls. We responded to 24 squad runs. Officers issued 44 traffic citations. Out of those 44 traffic citations, 52 violations were cited, and 40 warnings were also issued. The department investigated four auto accident reports during the month of February. In a total, to date, January through February, 34 criminal offense reports. This is down seven reports from the same time period in 2023. Recently, we had coffee with the cops up here. It was a good time. I will make note, I did not eat any of the donuts. But we did have coffee and donuts, and everybody that came, I appreciate it, and they seemed to enjoy it, had a good time, got a lot of good ideas, and would like, what they'd like to see throughout the year from the police department, so we appreciate that. Like everybody to note, here on Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Police and Fire Department will have our open house up here, so we'll have a lot of little giveaways for the kids, hot dogs, drinks, snacks, and so forth. Come in here and see the police department and jump through all the equipment, the fire trucks, and the police cars, and so forth. So we hope to have a good turnout there. It's been a good turnout the last two years, so. And also, it's a little bit a ways off June 22nd, but it'll be here before we know it. That's game time with GPD, so we'll be over by Malloy's in the parking lot from noon to 3:00 p.m., playing games with the kids and serving pizza at noon. So more to come on that, but if you can mark your calendars, that'll be Saturday, June 22nd.
Thank you, Chief. I also didn't have any donuts. Okay. Mayor's report, I have the court receipts for the month of February. Checks to be issued, the state of Ohio, $2,233.77. Hamilton County, $76.50. And the Village of Green Hills, $8,399.09. I love how you get down to these pennies and cents on this stuff. Okay. All right, that's all I have. Reports of committees, that Community Development, Jim Boner?
Nothing to report.
Safety, Jeff Holter?
Yeah, we have not met since the shuffling of committees, but we're going to get something else on the books coming up here.
Okay. Recreation Cable TV, Rachel Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We still have to meet, and hopefully that'll be, well, we should definitely be able to meet in April. But in the meantime, just working on things with the calendar, talking to Avon, and even talk to the library about just coordinating some stuff. I did want to share that hopefully we can get the band out for a little ensemble on December 6th. And then I also talked to the New Life Furniture Bank and Thrift Store, and they have committed to bringing a truck for a fill-the-truck collection drive for the two community ourselves that we're going to have. So if anyone reached, wants to reach out again to New Life Furniture Bank and Thrift Store, if something is too big for them to take it to where they'll have their truck, which is likely going to be down by the green, then they'll be willing to pick it up as long as they know, either before or afterwards. But otherwise, if there's something that people want to get out, they'll be willing to take it down. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. I got an email from somebody that wanted to know if the village was interested in having food trucks at different times in the year and all that. I suggest that I was, I guess because I was before recreation, I referred to address it to either the village manager or to recreation, so I gave both of your names to go through there.
That's correct, thank you.
All right. Services and Streets, Melody Hermes?
We have not had a chance to meet yet, but I did want to remind everyone or tell everyone about the spring leaf collection. The Green Hills Services Department will collect bulk leaves from, starting Monday, April 1st, going through Friday, April 5th. Each street in the village will receive one pass for the leaf, spring leaf collection. Please have your leaves at the curb by Monday morning, April 1st, for collection. Crews will not be raking leaves, only vacuuming them. Leaves should be placed at the back of the curb and not in the street. Piles may be no wider than three feet. Never place leaves within 15 feet of Storm sewer catch basin, and please keep catch basins clear of leaves at all times to prevent street flooding during rain events. Leaves only will be accepted for this collection. Piles containing branches, garden waste, soil, rocks, or any material that could damage our machinery will be left and become the property owner's responsibility to remove and recycle. Please remember that the village leaf collection is intended to assist residents during spring cleanup. No leaves may be placed at the curb after the service department has made its one pass down your street. Leaves which are blocked by parked vehicles will not be collected, and will be the responsibility of the resident to remove and recycle. Just a reminder that if you have not, please sign up for the emails. You can receive emails such as this yourselves, and you can sign up through our website. Thank you.
And also, if you want, you could put your leaves in your trash cans, and they'll be taken away by Rumpke on a regular trash day. All right. Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Mary Walter?
I'm going to try to have a meeting on April the 23rd, if we can combine the finance at that time.
If we.
If we need to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Finance and Audit, Jack Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council at your places tonight is the February recap of the General Fund activities. You'll see the General Fund continues to have monthly trends of increases, meaning our inflationary increase in expenditures in good form. On the expense side, the voted transfers from last month of $480,000 going into the police, Malloy's, and pool special funds are noted there. Percentage of expenditures to appropriation is in line for the timing in the year, and there are no additional transfers noted or planned for this evening, so it currently stands at the same amount. The general fund balance at the end of February was $2,167,938.64. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
All right. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. Unfinished business, none. New business, ordinance number 2024-0. Is that zero?
That's O for ordinance 01.
O, 01, C-CD. Imposing a moratorium for a period of 360 days on the granting of any permit allowing adult-use cannabis operators within the Village of Green Hills and declaring emergency.
So we'd like to make a motion just to read the title only.
Oh, I, sorry, I was, we were looking back and forth, but I have a question for clarification because you had mentioned for it to be an emergency, so this is only going to be a reading of it?
No, that'll be the next step.
Okay, got it, a second.
Clerk, pull the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
All right, next step?
So the title is imposing a moratorium for a period of 360 days on the granting of any permit allowing adult-use cannabis operators within the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. And so we'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the ordinance be read in two separate occasions.
Second?
Okay, moving to second. Clerk, pull the council.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one?
So the motion to adopt ordinance number one is an emergency. Ordinance is closed.
Second?
Aye, or second. Oh, you're second, just kidding.
Clerk, pull the council?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2024-0. Oh, oh. 01, C.D., passes. Council have any comments they want to make before we move on to the calendar?
I did have one question. Is there any communities that are beyond the moratorium that we could get some guidance from, like how they handle things and how those are written up?
I'm thinking, of the communities that I represent and that other folks in my office represent, I don't think anyone has taken any, any action yet. Right. But again, I would, I would think of it as sort of the threshold question that you have to answer first is, do you want to prohibit it, would you have the authority to do, or do you want to allow it and potentially limit the number? That's the sort of threshold question that you'll have to answer first.
I have a question as well. So the mile radius, is that also from a medical dispensary, or is it just for?
I don't know the answer to that. I just learned about the mile thing at this presentation that I was at a week or so ago, and that may be more an administrative thing that the, what is, they changed the name now. Now, I think it's called the Ohio Cannabis Commission. Used to be called the Marijuana something. But I believe that's all being done at the state, so I don't know the answer to that. We can try to find out.
Okay. I would say my curiosity is just a map that would show where, if it's even something we have to worry about based on where our schools, churches, and parks are, kind of, we have, we're pretty small.
And I can tell you, that, that is exactly the kind of thing that is usually explored during a moratorium period like this, where you, you do that kind of work to see what may even be, where it may even be permitted.
All right, Municipal Calendar?
I'll put my old hat on. The Fire Department is having their Easter egg hunt on Sunday at 2:00 p.m. on the Commons. It'll be over at 2:00.
2:02.
2:00, I was going to say 2:00 and 10 seconds, but it's pretty quick. Get there early, or you will miss your opportunity. It's a fast-moving event.
Faster than the Kentucky Derby.
I would say yes.
Yeah, we have, we have to set up for Streets and Services and Safety, see if, get some dates on the calendar and get back to everybody.
All right. Moving on. Another opportunity for residents and non-residents, Spirit for Council. This is time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you are a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, and state your comments. If you have questions, questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for, for quick response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes.
Good evening. Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. Over the past several months at council meetings, I have given you all reports about widespread opposition to H.R. 3557, the American Broadband Deployment Act, and other federal bills that eliminate municipal control over cell tower and wireless deployment. I've also asked you to contact our lawmakers about these bills. Opposition to H.R. 3557 includes U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and National League of Counties. If these bills are passed and Green Hills no longer has authority over the deployment of cell tower and other wireless infrastructure, this could significantly affect the village's income, historical status, property values, safety and security. Over the past few years, I've attended almost all council meetings and work sessions. I don't recall ever attending one where no one has raised concerns about the village's finances. That alone would be a reason to contact our lawmakers about these bills. At every meeting, the mayor says that council will respond to comments after giving them thoughtful and thorough consideration. Despite my asking you over the past several months to contact our lawmakers about these bills, it is still unclear to me how many of you have. I don't recall there being any discussion about my comments or request at meetings, and I don't recall any of you, other than Jennifer Osmanaglu, telling me that you contacted any of our lawmakers. On the other hand, I have contacted our federal lawmakers, Sherrod Brown, Warren Davidson, and J.D. Vance about these bills. I have been on conference calls with their staff members, as well as other federal lawmakers, including Congressman Greg Lansman. Council members from Merrimont were also on the call with Lansman's office last week. At past meetings, I've also read from different reports about these controversial bills. Before I read from the one that I gave you tonight, I'm asking again that you strengthen the village's small cell wireless ordinance so it's as protective as ordinance is passed by other Ohio municipalities. Now I'm going to read some texts from the Environmental Health Trust. Now I'm going to read some texts from the Environmental Health Trust fact sheet titled "Federal Legislation on Wireless Communications: Satellite Proliferation, Hundreds of Thousands of U.S. Launches With No Environmental Review." On the backside, there is a full page of research reference links. There are three bills pending, H.R. 1338, H.R. 1339, and S. 1648/HR682. These bills would fast-track satellite deployment with no review of environmental or agricultural impacts and no national security impact assessment, such as from orbital debris and spectrum sharing. The fact sheet states that over 1 million satellites are planned. I ask again that you contact our lawmakers about these bills. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, nothing else, meeting adjourned.